Can you guys hear me there?
I can't hear anything. I don't know if you guys are trying to talk or not, but I can't hear you.
Mark can hear us?
No, I can't. I can hear Joel.
Yeah, I don't know why. All right, hold on.
Oh.
There we go. Yep, we're good now? Yep.
I got you.
Sorry, everyone. I'll start that over since we didn't have any sound. Did call the meetings order. We do have quorum and Mark made the motion to approve the agenda of the minutes. Ken did second it and that motion passed. Now we'll move on with Rich Brum.
Hey, did you guys, I sent an email out earlier this morning on the program and budget and the map and stuff. Did you guys get that?
Yep.
Yes, I did.
Okay, so on the budget side of things, I, the dollars and cents are the same as what I submitted in the county budget. I mean, I tried to keep them the same. Some things that have changed are maybe what, I'm working on an amendment for 2020, which we're gonna have to have because there's a project that changed. We had a 50-50 funding on it. I made it 100% swap funding on that bridge down by BMC Materials. So that's gonna change the balances and whatnot. And then going through what we currently were at, there's some changes in carryover balances. So we'll need an amendment in 2020. So my fiscal 21 budget hasn't really been affected by much of that. What affects is the bottom line when it's all said and done. The carryover balance is gonna be kinda low. But that's all depending on how this year's ends up. So the items themselves aren't really much different. I don't remember if you guys had a chance to look at everything, but the categories themselves are the same as far as expenditures. It's just a matter of what revenues will be. So I tried to keep construction the same. However, some of the construction projects, we're really, we're really tight on funding. So what I've got programmed in the county program may or may not take place depending on where we're at with funding. And the one project really talking about is Highway 105 going west from the interstate. I hadn't had that one in the five-year plan before. And I kinda put it in the program for next year just because I don't know how long that overlay that's on the west side there is gonna last. It's, the centerline's already kinda peeling up pretty bad. And we're gonna try to Band-Aid it the best we can. But when we get through this year, we'll know where our farm-to-market funding is. I know we're borrowed ahead pretty heavy. And with the fertile project and, well, the paving project south of Manley is local. But with fertile and everything else, we'll see where that balance is come time for that. I mean, we saved a little bit of money on the project just based on the bids that came in for those projects. So I don't know if you guys have any questions on what I submitted. Like I said, the expenditures haven't changed. I've got some pretty big numbers, like I mentioned to you last time, in the roads category. I've got 2.1 million. And that was when we put it in December. We didn't know what winter and spring were gonna do to us. And I wanted to have enough in there for some rock. So that's a, that's a pretty hefty one. We've run, we're running about 1.6 million. So it's got about a half a million dollars in there that could be transferred to a different category if we need to later on. And then I did put $110,000 in the real estate and buildings, and that's usually been running about 40,000. But we had talked about if we were gonna find a piece of ground to buy, we'd have some money available if we needed to. So there's a couple categories in there that are a little bit higher than normal. So that might skew my carryover balance of what we had. We're down in like the $175,000 range for a carryover balance from the fiscal 22, which that's all gonna change based on how this year ends and how next year goes. So it's kind of a shot in the dark right now. We'll just have to keep an eye on it. One thing that, that we're probably gonna have to look at is this probably this last quarter going into July 1 or June 30th. I'm sure tax receipts will be a little bit lower based on the fuel tax with less people driving with this coronavirus. I think that's gonna affect what we're gonna see in, in fuel tax receipts. So we'll just have to play it by ear on some of this stuff. I don't know if you guys have any questions. The map kinda gives you an indication of where we plan. They're color-coded. It just kinda tells what we have in the next five years, I guess. And obviously, things are always subject to change based on conditions, so.
I don't have, I guess, neither of you guys on that? Rich, what, a year ago, we looked at the, it was just over there by the Tuck Stavroff going off Thrush Avenue. Those big twin culprits that went through, they were kinda rusted out on the bottom side.
Okay.
Thought of replacing those later on?
I haven't looked at that lately. And I guess more, more of a, what I look at that is I look, is that more of a maintenance project than it is a bona fide bid letting project? And that's usually what.
It's something better to take a look at because that one culprit was pretty rusted on the bottom side, so.
Okay.
See what happens after the spring rains here.
Right, right. And see where the money's at. The one thing like I wanna tell you is that we're. Pardon me?
If the bottom isn't rusted out completely yet.
Yeah, and there's, there's some maintenance things we could consider. We could pour a bottom in there, but it might be better off just taking them out. We'll have to look at that and see when we get closer into the, if everything's taken care of there. But keep in mind, and one thing I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna raise any red flags. But we've got a lot of roads falling apart really fast. And I'm just gonna throw this out there. There doesn't have to be any conversation on it whatsoever. But with the new wind towers coming in and the infrastructure, the way it is on the roads, you might know where I'm, where I'm going with the, with that as far as tiffing some projects here. But we can discuss that at a later date. I just have stuff programmed right now, so.
Okay.
If you guys are okay with this, we can, we can look at this and you guys can do your approval. And then AJ, I'll get you an official copy emailed to you for signature. These are just the previews before I did a final submittal. And if you guys have any questions, I don't have to have this turned until the 15th of April, but I wanted to put it in front of you now. So if you wanna digest it per week, and then we can talk about it next week again, or if you guys are okay with the way it is, we can go ahead and do what we've got here. I don't know that much is gonna change, so.
What do you guys think?
Let's go with it.
As long as, you kinda seem like you got it under control and a little bit of a game game. So I think as long as you know where you're at or hope to be when we're all done.
It's like throwing darts to the dartboard, AJ.
Yeah, I can't believe it. So, all right, I'll take.
I move to approve the secondary road physically here 21 DOT budget and program.
There's a motion and a second to approve the road department 21 DOT budget. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? All right, that motion will carry.
Okay, so.
Go ahead, Rich.
Okay, the next thing you guys have is the review of the federal aid agreement for competitive highway bridge. But that is, is, is that 390th Street Bridge. It's a special project. It's the Competitive Highway Grant Program they had come out. Couple years ago, we were talking about trying to get, they were trying to do some special funding and trying to find cheaper ways to save money on bridge work. And so this is that bundling project with Mitchell County. This agreement is just no different than really any other agreement we've done in the past as far as whenever we use swap funding or, 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 or bridge money, the DOT sends us the competitive high, well, this is competitive highway, but otherwise it's swap funding agreement. Just saying that we're gonna use our money. This is the amount we're asking for, for this project. So it's basically just an agreement like, it's a standard agreement we've always done with all of our bridge projects that go through the swap program. So there's nothing goofy about this agreement.
And that's that bridge on 390, right?
Correct, just west of the interstate.
Yep. Yeah, we knew that one was gonna be.
And those projects, they're gonna be let probably next December. And we've got, you know, WHS is working on the designs on those, so.
I move we approve the federal aid agreement and competitive highway bridge project.
There's a motion and a second to approve the competitive agreement highway bridge project. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. All right, how about your resolution, Rich?
The resolution is, is basically a 20AE agreement that Michelin County will both sign.
No, yeah, E.
We got E. What's the federal aid agreement and what's the cooperative agreement? What's the difference?
That, this one is the, this is basically a 20AE agreement with Mitchell County because they're doing a bridge project also. And this project you guys just approved is bundled. And that's how we've got the funding for these two projects. So what this is, is a 20AE agreement between the two counties that says, and I've, I've made it so that Worth County is the contracting authority for both projects. Doesn't mean Worth County's paying for Mitchell County's project, but they needed one contact person. Fortunately for Mitchell and Worth County, had one engineer for both. So it made it really simple. They just wanna know what county's gonna be the lead on it. So basically, Worth County is gonna be the lead. Once you guys agree to this, I'll send this to Mitchell County tomorrow. And they'll agree. It's a 20AE agreement just saying that if, if it was, if it was Mitchell County and Howard County, we'd have to have agreement with Howard County or whatever, if it was a neighboring county. And then that firm would be, or that, that, that county, whoever is the lead would be in charge of the bid lettings and all the other stuff. So it's really, doesn't affect a whole lot other than who's gonna take lead on this bundling project. So that's all this is.
So we need a motion to approve the cooperative agreement for highway bridge projects. I will so move.
There is a motion, second, and a second to approve the cooperative agreements. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion will carry.
All right, now we have the projects I talked to you about last week. The 345th Street paving project, which is the fertile project that goes from wherever they left, from our, I can't remember what the road is now. Dogwood, Dogwood into fertile. The low bid was, make sure I got the right one here, was $225,202 by Heartland Asphalt. And I make a recommendation, we award the project to Heartland Asphalt. And then what I'm asking for is that same resolution we do the bridge project so that AJ doesn't have to log on to Doc Express and try to sign things. This resolution is for you guys to approve it and allow me to sign for it.
Okay.
If you guys wanna award the project.
Yes. I move with resolution 20, 20.03, 0.4. For the 345th Street, Street Paving Project. The county engineers authorized to sign contact documents in Doc Express.
Yes, there's a motion and a second for resolution 2020.3.4. Any other discussion? This'll be a roll call vote. Abrams, aye. Smady?
Aye.
Stone? Aye. Motion will carry, Rich. You can go ahead and work on that project.
Sorry, I tapered on the agenda.
All right, what's your next resolution now, Rich?
The next one is for Partridge south of Manley and then over on 350th Street to the highway 5. That's a local project. That one, the low bid was $329,420.70 to Heartland Asphalt as well. Thing processed as before, just wanting to be able to sign so you guys don't have to. So looking for an approval. I recommend we award the project to Heartland Asphalt.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2020.03.5. Approval of Park Street Avenue and 350th Street Paving Project and authorize the engineers sign the contract on Doc Express.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve that resolution 2020.03.5. Any other discussion? Hearing none, another roll call, roll call vote. Abrams?
Aye.
Smady?
Aye.
Stone? Aye. That motion will approve.
All right.
All right. Road grader?
So done some digging around a little bit and talked to the guys. And it's always difficult to change things or do something a little different. But looking at some quotes here between Cat. Cat had submitted a quote for a 12, well, we've been running our 12 M3s. The next year here, they're calling them 140 Ms. All it is is a sticker change. It's essentially the same machine. And then what I did bid out, or I had a quote for was 670 John Deere, which was told that they're kinda supposed to be equivalent. When I look at the numbers, I'm looking at them thinking, well, I wanted to know what a 770G was gonna cost from John Deere. So I had them submit an additional dollar, additional quote for a 770G to see what I could get, you know, a little bit bigger machine from John Deere. As it turns out, the, the machines themselves are, I guess, evaluating some dollars here. Both machines have similar weights in the 770 category. Looking at price, they're full dress machines and full dress, I mean, V plows, wings, all the snow equipment that we need that we're running. And then also what I did add separate was our first Cat machines, we had a five-year, 5,000-hour warranty on them. I upped it to seven years, 7,000 because we keep our machines longer than that. If we can get a little bit more maintenance out of them that we've already paid for. And actually, when you think about what the warranty costs us and what we spend in maintenance, you know, it's probably not a bad idea to extend these warranties a little longer. We pay more for them, the warranties. But in the long run, I guess, we hopefully save money. So Cat, or Cat submitted a bid, or quote, I should say, a quote for a 140 to the tune of, with, with the, with the warranty at $322,983.61. John Deere submitted a quote for, with a 770GP or $316,574. Keep in mind, the 670 was substantially lower at about 289,983. But I think after talking to some other county engineers or hearing stories from other county engineers, the 670 might just not have the oomph we need for pushing snow. So I think in, I think in the grand scheme of things, the 77, the 770 is gonna be a little bit more of a machine for us to handle. Talking to the guys out in the shops a little bit, their reviews were kinda mixed. I know people are used to the Cats now. You know, they were used to the, they were used to the vocals. And then you bring a joystick control into the mix, and then they gotta get used to something else, I think. Trying a John Deere in the fleet isn't a bad thing to try to change what we're doing here. They might not, you know, whoever operates is gonna have to try to change, you know, they're not used to that type of control system, so. But they'll learn it just like they learned the Cats. So I guess if we're gonna get another motor grader here this year, I'd recommend that we, we buy a John Deere 770 for the $316,574. And the reason I want to is that we wanna try something different here and see if that machine, I've heard the transmissions are a little bit smoother shifting than the Cats. And, and I don't know if, you know, that makes a bit, we'll see if that makes a big difference in snow removal or not. I don't know. I mean, but I, I wanna try something a little different and see what's, see what John Deere has to offer.
Do you have the same warranty?
Pardon me?
Do you have the same warranty as a, as a Cat?
Yep, seven, seven years, 7,000 hours. They're both business.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on the motor grader? Obviously, this is the budget I haven't even put in for anyways, right?
Yep. Right about where I expected the numbers to be. So that's good and bad. I guess it'd be nice to be cheaper, but.
Sounds good to get a fully dressed machine.
Yep.
The difference is $1,400, so.
I move we purchase the John Deere for 316,574.
Yes, there's a motion and a second to purchase John Deere road grader. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? That motion will carry.
Thank you.
Betcha, thank you. Resolution on the right-of-way vacation. Basically, this is the vacate that old right-of-way that's gonna go into our development on South Side Casino, correct?
If I remember right, that's what it was. There was a piece of, piece of right-of-way there on the south end that was kinda, can really know where it was at. I know that Jason with V and K had done all the legwork on that. We just thought we'd put it into my discussion to get it taken care of this way. Since it's a secondary road, so he might know more about that than I do as far as anything else. But it's just a vacation, that right-of-way, so whatever. The next landowner owns that parcel and doesn't worry about any right-of-way issues. We'll never use the right-of-way for anything anyway, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution 2020.03.30.30.30. Right-of-way vacation for County Road, TE Wheelerwood Road.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution on the right-of-way vacation. Any other discussion? Be a roll call vote. Abrams?
Aye.
Smady?
Aye.
Stone? Aye. All right, resolution is approved to vacate that right-of-way on Wheelerwood Road.
As far as any other maintenance goes, we're trying to do some spot rocking and doing some blading and getting some stuff squared away. And I know the guys are out with the excavator trying to do a little digging and cleaning, so. We'll see how the, the weather takes us from here. I know we wanted to do some patching on BMC Road yet before we get too busy. So we'll see if schedules are working.
Good. It's not getting any better down there, I can tell you that.
No, I know that. And there's probably a good handful that we wanna try to hit right of way. It's just that in my program, I had programmed for a patching project, but they're falling apart faster than we can get to them. So we'll try to get the worst first and then see what our, see what our timeline is for everything else. What we're gonna do is use that old EMA trailer that we inherited and kinda turn that into our patch, patch trailer. I guess all of our equipment will be in there. So I think I might've told you guys that last week. We're gonna convert that over, so. Kind of not an important thing. And more important thing is getting the roads patched, so. Anyway, that's all I got for you this morning.
Okay. Am I getting anything for Rich? Anything else?
Nope.
Nothing I can take though.
Okay, I believe that's it, Rich. Thank you. Uh, moving on to drainage. Nothing on drainage? How about claims? No claims. Resolution 2020.03.30.1, the adoption salary recommendations for elected officials. This is a resolution that was put forth by the Worth County Compensation Board.
We'll make a motion to pass resolution 2020.03.30.1, adoption salary recommendations for elected officials.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Abrams?
Aye.
Smady?
Aye.
Stone? Aye. That motion will pass.
Sign on the eyes or the nays or?
Yeah.
Also? Before our budget hearing.
Got a couple MMTs we can get through quick.
What is that for?
Neil. Home place and dad's site.
Okay, now we're gonna jump down to number 17, do a couple things before our budget hearing. There is a couple maneuver management plans. One, the, they're both for CB Neil and son.
I want a motion to acknowledge the maneuver management plans for C B Neil and Sons voters.
Yep.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in a second to acknowledge the maneuver management plans for C B Neil and Sons. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. Do we have any reports?
Nope.
No reports. Payroll salary changes?
Nope.
True. Um done them to agree with law enforcement. I did talk with Dee in Manly. And at the time, they were supposed to approve that at their meeting. She was on vacation, forgot to put on their agenda. So it will be supposed to be on their agenda for their next meeting, which um must be Wednesday, I think, the first. Um so hopefully we'll see that uh agreement maybe next week then. I will put another colleague over this week to remind her to get it on there so we can get that taken care of enough our agenda, so. Um County Capital Projects is kind of on the wayside for now. Okay, that's about it. So we do our budget hearing, I guess, and we'll take up, let's stick right at nine o'clock, don't we?
And um for the assessor's office, the fourteen, I left that on there. I looked for resolutions. I tried to find stuff that other counties did and I couldn't find anything, so they're going to have to.
Not come up with it.
Yeah.
Did I hear something? Okay. Sounds good.
And either I let leave it on or else they'll have to let us know when they want it back on.
Yes.
Should leave it on probably. Come up with something.
Right. So our, this is our public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
I move, go ahead and move to recess. Mr. Chair, will we recess?
I will second it.
Motion of second to recess our regular meeting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We will recess.
Mr. Chair, will we open the public hearing?
Motion of second to open our twenty twenty one budget hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, our budget hearing is open for fiscal year twenty twenty one.
George, can you unmute the uh other people? Public.
There's anybody? Sorry. Sorry, I hit the unmute all. My apologies.
No, no, he's got it, he's got it.
All right, uh is there any public on the line has any discussion on the budget hearing?
Cindy Thompson's not on mute either. Or C T Thompson.
I will ask one more time if there's anybody uh from the public on the line that would like to mention anything about our budget hearing.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair, I move we close the public hearing.
I will second it.
Motion to second to close the public hearing. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry.
Mr. Chair, we reconvened the regular meeting.
Motion to reconvene our regular meeting.
I will second it.
Second, on the floor, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Our regular meeting is now reconvened. Now we need to consider adopt resolution twenty twenty point oh three point three oh dot two, adoption of Worth County fiscal year twenty twenty one budget.
I was so moved with that.
And there's two places to sign there. And I think you guys, you've seen it all and.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. There's a motion in the second to approve the budget. Uh it's going to be a roll call vote. Abrams?
Aye.
Smitty?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
That motion will pass. All right. Um there's a budget request for Homeward Incorporated.
Yeah, it's just the normal five thousand dollars that we've had in the budget for as long as I've been here.
No, last three, three years.
Oh, three years.
Yeah, last three years.
Okay.
That's the only thing in it, in the budget, okay?
Yep.
That's good.
I move we approve the five thousand dollars for Homeward, Homeward Inc.
I will second it.
There's a motion of second. Any other discussion?
And are our representatives still, you and Jeannie?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. Uh Homeward Bat Co., Melissa, if you're on there, is there anything you'd like to discuss with us?
Is it, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we got you.
Okay, um I just wanted to let you guys know that the uh website is updated with a COVID nineteen tab and there's a bunch of different resources for small businesses. And I am working with one small business on um submitting that grant that is due tomorrow. And then um I did notice that the governor sent out um if you are a employee owned business, I think um there is new information where you could apply for unemployment benefits at that time too, but that is something that I have to research yet today.
Sounds good. I know it sounds like there's a lot of different options out there for small businesses, so I guess
There is.
whatever info they give them, better off will be, so. All right, anything else?
Um not at this time.
All righty, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you, miss.
Um Judy, we're waiting on that assessor's resolution.
Was Jason going to talk at all or?
Uh oh yeah, sorry. Jason Petersburg. Are you on there?
Maybe he wasn't.
You just got some questions I think on the unasked email about the junk and stuff.
I think, yeah. Um then I did, I did see uh Chris Myers responded to that, that all that stuff belongs to the casino.
Okay.
So I don't know if Jason, I think Jay, I'm assuming Jason is going to contact them.
Your host Dave, in bar.
And get it cleaned up, so. Um otherwise, you guys did see the changes
Yep.
with our storm sewer situation.
Right.
Um.
Okay, is that, that will be in the urban renewal then, right?
Yeah, so should, that should all be in the urban renewal area so that we won't have to come up with any extra
Right, that's good.
cash on hand for that seventy thousand or roughly whatever.
Can I add one thing to that? You guys, you guys know that he's running you understand he's running it through the right of way and running through that box cover that goes under the interstate, right?
Yeah, yeah, that was our plan B.
Yep, and I just kind of told them to go ahead and do it. I figure, I feel if it's in a, I know we share that box cover with the DOT. I mean, it goes under the interstate too, and I don't really know how that whole thing, I'm sure when the interstate was built, they paid for everything, but I just told Jason to do whatever he had to do. It's in my right, it's in our right of way, so um we'll take the heat if something happens beyond that with the DOT, but I doubt it. But I just said, we're not going to go through this whole jumping through hoops to tie into that. It's water that's going to run through that box, whether it's coming in through a tile or a ditch, so. I just told him to go ahead and do it and we'll deal with the DOT if they have questions later.
Actually, it'd be better going into that box. It won't cause any more erosion in the ditch.
Exactly, yeah. It'll be a lot cleaner, a lot cleaner for everything there to
Right.
take care of everything. So anyway, I told them to go ahead and just do it and we'll leave it at that.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Uh people service, Chris Myers, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
Okay.
I talked to you last week about dumping a water tower, but that's all. You said there was wouldn't be able to work it in, I guess, huh?
Well, it just, it could cause a lot more problems and you have to take power out of, out of service for two days and there's a lot to go with with it, you know, because of backwashing and the filters and uh all that stuff. That's quite a process.
So our best bet is to probably just take care of that when we have to paint the inside of it and do it all at one shot?
Correct, yes.
Okay. It is prime time to be doing all that, but unfortunately, we weren't ready to and
Right.
I guess uh that's the way it goes, so.
Is it a possibility that we all reviewed, uh the contract is up, but I go just do a one year extension as of now? See how this turns out?
Um, that's above my pay grade. I mean, you can definitely ask uh Steve, you know, that question since I don't, you know, I don't have that authority to say yes or no.
Okay.
Um I did talk to Steve and uh he was, he was curious and uh uh you know, we're, if we're going to develop RFPs or whatever, we haven't really a hundred percent decided that, but he was just wanting to know if they were, if people are still going to get a chance to bid on it. And I said, of course, they can always put together a contract and a number and and I'm sure things are going to change a little with our water treatment just because of the addition of another chemical, but um so yeah, I'll be, I'll contact Steve then and and uh maybe try to get together with him on the phone or something and go that route too.
And I can pass it on also.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be fine. You just let him know I'll be getting ahold of him and trying to get something figured out. Did you end up getting ahold of Brandon Kennethon on getting that siding fixed?
Yes, he said he had ordered the uh ten. I talked to him, I think, two weeks ago or three weeks ago already, and he said he had ordered the ten.
Okay. Sounds good. So hopefully you can get on that fairly quick maybe, so.
That's what, he said he wanted to get it done before it got the real rainy season, so he was wanting to get it done right away.
Okay, that sounds good. Uh how else is everything going out there?
Good. I talked to the casino last, like twice last week, once I called them about water issues to see how things are going. And uh they have not complained for anything. Then we talked on Thursday about if they were going to open again on the thirty first, uh what process that we were going to go through for making clean, safe drinking water. And I just told them that we're a business, usually we still have to keep the chlorine residuals in the water and uh we're pumping water every day, albeit a lot less than we normally do, that uh that we still have clean, safe drinking water every day.
Yep. That's true. We got more than one customer out there, so.
Right. I mean, our, our gallonage is down on a slow day, it'll be eight thousand. Most days it's about thirteen, where we've been in that forty two thousand range until COVID nineteen hit.
A lot of water at the end of the day, that shows that, doesn't it?
Is that going to affect the sewage plant, any, with not having the volume come in?
It, um if they lock the state down, yes, I'm very nervous though, because we need the food, we need the, you know, the people using the bathrooms to keep us alive, so um yeah, it could. If they shut the state down, it could definitely have an adverse effect on us.
We gotta buy some bugs, huh?
Yeah, we may have to buy a semi load of bugs once a week just to keep it going. I don't know, we'll have to see.
Okay.
Stay on top of it.
Yep, and it really wouldn't have to buy it. It's just people would give it to us, but we'd have to pay for trucking to get it here
Right.
and dump into, into our lift station.
Okay.
I guess, yeah, you'll just have to monitor that. You'll see that in your, in your testing and all that, so.
Yeah.
Correct, correct, yep.
Okay.
Because I was thinking about that, you know, if you don't have the bugs in there, it's going to work, you know?
It'll make it work.
Right.
The bacteria.
Right.
Okay.
Give you any else for Chris? Anything else for us, Chris?
Not at this time. Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. All right. Department head discussion on our COVID nineteen. Um obviously, if you guys want to chat in any questions um while we go along, I'm kind of just going to go across the top of my screen and and pick out every department head, just see how things are going. Uh no real order, you guys. I don't pick anybody over anyone, especially you, Rich. Dan, thanks.
Uh we've been tied up this weekend pretty heavily with the rescue and recovery mission. Um that is ongoing. I'll be going out there after I get some paperwork done here. We uh as far as the COVID, I'm meeting with my heads, department heads here every Friday morning. Um everything we have in place is going well right now, but we reevaluate on a weekly basis. There is some stuff I got to get with uh Jessica Ryerson on, on some new rules, which I'll be doing that before I leave to go out on scene. The only other thing I got is uh we use the uh instant command trailer over the weekend and with the drones. We have tons of very positive uh working with that. It it worked out really good. There's a few little things we can enhance and make it better, which we'll be looking into. I've already asked for some bids on a couple of things from Comtech. Um that's kind of where we're at right now. Um what we've had in place for the COVID is working well. Um it's just continuing to tweak. Supply wise, we're, we're good on supplies. We're not great, but we're good for right now. If it goes harder, we're probably going to be needing more masks, but uh right now, we're doing okay. I'll take any questions the board has.
Questions, I guess, uh yeah, just keep up with Mark and I don't know what he's able to get, you know, with resources for masks or anything, but I know it's kind of a slim pickings all around everywhere, so. Do what you got to do, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Uh Jim Hanson.
For us, we're still trying to continue almost business as usual, other than we have the gates closed on the parks where the gates can be closed. Um we're not restricting access. We're just making walk in essentially. Um tomorrow, Dan will be back. He's, his two weeks of being quarantined will be done, so he'll be back be helping us with spring projects, so we're going to try and run business as usual for now.
Sounds good. I did get a question and I answered it as that, yeah, parks are all closed. But your campground in Worth County Lake, once this is all over, is that set to open?
I, I would say that cautiously optimistic it'll be this summer, but I it depends on how long they say the social distancing thing, because that'll affect campgrounds big time.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I told them too, is until this all blows over, it's obviously not open, but.
Right.
So I did not speak out of place, that's good.
No.
Okay, any questions for Jim? Any else for us, Jim?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Cindy Thompson. Anything on there you'd like to discuss?
There you go. Not at this time.
All righty, thank you. Auditor.
Okay, we need to talk a little bit about how this time is going to shake out during this. Basically, in that meeting, the the department heads, or you were in Renee.
You're in the first department, Renee.
Um it was stated that we would pay regular. That wasn't a motion or anything, but the board for the department heads kind of ran with it. So after talking with Renee, we kind of decided that the last two weeks, I mean, we had to get payroll done. So we notated anything that was due to COVID, but we didn't make anybody use any of their leave. Um since that time, there has been Um, since that time, there has been, um, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act has happened, and, um, you, there are two weeks that basically you have to allow. And, um, they're not, they don't have to be consecutive, but they get two weeks paid, and then we have to start using their leave. I think.
Sounds right. I've, I mean, I've heard so many things come across the board of, is this a possibility, this a possibility, that?
So, for the two weeks that they're guaranteed, there's a two-thirds and a full pay. And I would like to, um, recommend, just for simplicity, for those two weeks, and to allow people time to prepare financially, or get other daycare in order or whatever, that that ends up, that. Every, everything is full-time for those two weeks.
Oh, right.
And other, other counties have done that. Um, otherwise, on the rest, I guess we have to just keep monitoring and working with them, because it, it falls under FMLA, and they are, there's twelve weeks with their vacant, yeah. So, we just gotta work with everybody and document on time sheets, and hope that everything turns out, and we get out of this soon.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think it's gonna happen.
You guys are all, I would assume all departments are working together real well, as far as, you know, taking their weeks off, and workloads are being covered, whatever there is, and so that's the good thing. Yeah, we just have to work with, work with you guys on this, so.
No, I, I mean, I agree, I guess, that's what we need to do. Um. And I mean, I don't know where everybody's sick time at, and we've got some newer employees.
It's gonna be tough on some people.
You're right.
But I, I don't know if we'll end up, if we'll allow them to go into negative sick time, or, I mean, we're, there's gonna have to be some more decisions probably made in the next two weeks.
Sure.
So that we can figure out what to continue with.
Yeah, but going to negative and earn back or something.
But at this point. Yeah, something, I think.
Right.
But at this point, um, I am, um, asking you guys for a motion to have a, have full pay for any one of the, um, reasons, including daycare, just for the two, two weeks.
I will make that motion.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Um, does that matter whether I direct somebody to go home? You know, two weeks ago, I directed an employee to go home, because they were high-risk, and. I wanna know where that fits in too, because it wasn't a, it wasn't, you know, he wasn't volunteering, this individual wasn't volunteering to go home, it was my concern on, on their health, and. I know at the time, we had that meeting, it was just do, do what we need to do, and we'll take care of it later. Now we've got this thing here to look at, is that still gonna include that? It's been two weeks now, and without giving too much detail, he's gonna be home for a little longer now. Um, if you guys want to know, I can tell you later, but, um, he won't be coming back.
Jackie says that's included.
I think I paid regular wages that, those, for these first two weeks here, because we didn't have anything else, and, and it was not a decision I sent him home, so I'm okay with leaving it, because it's two weeks, but I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
We were just, yeah, we were just doing that to kinda see where this all played out, now we're gonna, that would actually start now.
Starting, yeah, with, with this paycheck, or the, the next paycheck will be this new two weeks.
Yep.
Question I have on that, before you vote, let's say we send them because they've gone on a cruise or out of the, out of the area, and we tell them to go home and self-quarantine, but they violate that. And they have, uh, gone out into the public, and that, how are we gonna handle that compared to the other?
If you're documented.
That takes sick time if you're documented.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, yeah, that was kinda the whole point of documenting this, because, um, this way we can cover our bases. If we tell somebody to go home and quarantine, um, that's what they should have done. And I guess anyone who wants to abuse that shouldn't, uh.
Get paid.
Yeah, lose the time for it anyways. Um, like I said, at first, we were just hoping to get, see where this is gonna take us, and maybe not turn into nothing, but it obviously hasn't, it's gonna continue, so. Um, if that's the case, that, Dan, yes, take sick time, I guess, everybody here shaking their heads at me, so.
You gotta follow the rules.
Yep.
And, I mean, we'll do the best we can here, you know, we can only do so much too, so we don't wanna lose anybody over this, and, and so we'll do the best we can, but. Make them follow the rules.
And I know some of you guys are kind of in arrears with your time, um, you'll, you'll wanna start this, this two weeks with the April, with April first, does that make sense?
For the best for you.
So that's just how the pay, that's just how the pay grade works out?
Yeah, it might match with your time somewhat. Anybody that's behind, have any input on that? I need to talk to Shelley, probably for a little more direction.
I guess, uh.
Nobody, nobody's talking.
Yeah. We've kinda got the idea what's going on. If you have questions, I guess, maybe just direct them to Jackie and Shelley, so they can. Figure out the easiest way to make this, this two weeks on the payroll simple. Um, so I guess if there is any other discussion outside of this, yeah, I would just direct it to Jackie and Shelley.
And we'll probably talk to Renee. And like I said, this is what it is for now, and two weeks from now, we could be talking about something different. And yes, if, if it was last pay period, it's normal pay, but I need documentation of it, if it was a COVID situation.
Which would be, uh, daycare, any of that stuff. Anybody that affects, yeah, just make sure you document it.
And I think people pretty much did.
True.
And we've started a spreadsheet, so that, yeah, this is gonna be a nightmare.
Paperwork nightmare, but I guess, yeah.
Just do the best you can.
So back to that motion.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Okay, Mark made a motion to, uh, consider revision to the paid sick leave, expanded family, medical leave, under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Second.
For the second by Ken. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion will carry.
Thank you.
That's, uh, is that it for you?
I'm out.
Got it.
Question from recorder.
Yeah, she saw that.
Yeah.
Um, Jessica Ryerson.
Can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, um, yeah, as far as our department, we, you know, continue to provide our essential home care services, um, as well as we have one transit bus running, um, to provide rides for those for, that have essential needs. Um, as far as COVID- nineteen, I don't really have any new information to give at this time. Um, we do continue to have our weekly webinars with the Iowa Department of Public Health. And they send us emails with information, so any pertinent information that we do get, I will pass on to you guys, and we also push that info out onto our Facebook.
Perfect. Um, Brad, what's going on? Is it kinda holding steady right now, or is it going up or down on your end?
What was that?
As, as everything's going right now, is, is, are you guys running pretty steady, or is it, you getting an influx of extra stuff, or is it quiet around there? I guess what?
Yeah.
What do you?
Last week was kinda steady, it was a little calmer last week, it just kinda goes up and down, but we're holding in here.
Okay, perfect, and are you getting the supplies you need, I hope?
We are, Mark's been working on that, and we've been in communication with him if people call and are needing supplies, so.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions for Jessica?
Right on.
Jessica, you have any else for us?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Uh, recorder, we did see your chats come through, and I hope we answered your questions. If not, let us know. Um, Jake Hansen.
We're throwing them in the drop box, so, uh, them pushing back the, yeah?
You muted, you muted a little slow. We missed, yeah, we missed part, the first part of it, you unmuted a little slow.
Okay, uh, we're still taking in taxes, uh, at a regular pace for us, uh, the numbers that we've had for the last few years, we're, we're closing in on the same thing, so. Even with them pushing the, uh, penalty date back to, uh, April sixteenth or April seventeenth, um, we're still getting all the, all the payments in on time, people are doing a good job still, just, just getting it done, so it will have, we'll be sending the money out on, uh. Our normal schedule and everything to all the, the entities, but other than that, uh, not a whole lot different on our end.
Okay, perfect. Um, you got, your office under control then with the, uh?
Yep, I just have the one, yeah, just have one with, uh, the no daycare thing still too, and, uh, we're just kinda, we're doing it like a day-to-day deal, just kinda checking to see how things are going and everything, but. Otherwise, in here, uh, everybody else is, is doing their part, and I think everything's good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So Jake, do you understand that, um, just for her knowledge, after this two weeks, she may be going to two, two-thirds pay?
Okay, I'll let her know.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any else for Jake? Okay, I think we're all good here, Jake, thanks. Is that it? They get everybody?
Remember Chris, the council, is there any questions?
Chris Kennison, a media provider, you got any questions at all?
Nope, no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so I guess we'll move on to supervising our weekly report. Kenny.
Hey, Jake.
Yeah, sorry, who we got?
Yeah, Joel's the.
Joel, sorry.
Department head.
You know, I haven't been around much, so don't worry about it, I mean, I, you know, part-time employee, it, it's, it's okay. Uh, no, I'm, I am back in the office, I did my, uh, my week and a half stint, and I've been, uh, taking temperature, and everything looks good. Uh, I am pretty much set up for remote access, uh, across the board, if we do need to deploy some more people to work from home. I think that's set up, just, everybody needs to be aware that getting laptops and computer equipment is getting to be tricky, um, just because of the supply chain issues, and, you know, most everything comes from China. Um, so, you know, trying to get anything from those areas is, is a little tough, but, uh, you know, we'll, we'll make do as we have to. Um, and just be aware, I, I hope everybody's aware, that there were two courthouses or counties that have completely closed in the state, uh, because of COVID. Um, so we, we are speculating that tho, that's gonna increase here, hopefully, hopefully not, but it could increase here in the next couple of weeks, so, um, you know, we're gearing up, hopefully that doesn't happen, but if it does, then, uh, I think we're, we're somewhat prepared for that. Anything for me?
That sounds good, glad you're a little ahead of the game there.
Never.
Any guys, anything else for Joel? Alright, that's it, thank you, Joel. Uh, now you can talk, yeah?
Okay, I was at Forest City, I had two different meetings, we did, uh, Sandy Morales and Bill Jensen from North Bank, and then we talked to Prim Guard over there, and working on our acceptance, we got our, our twenty-eighteen agreement, getting a, a draft. And also our bylaws draft, and joined the Northwest Care Connection, working on that. And then we had, the other one was, uh, let's see, with County Social Services, that was, we had a lot of static on the lines, and everything else, a lot of people weren't muting their lines, and it's kinda hard to hear, but we got, got through that meeting okay. And then on Wednesday afternoon, I got a, I called from ISAC, and basically talked about the upcoming elections, so work with the auditor, and some counties are thinking about go, just going to all absentee ballots. Either that, or it's, or do one central location for the validity, and possibly combine all precincts into one. So that was coming from the state, it's just gonna be up, they're gonna talk to the different auditors, so, so, out throughout the state, and maybe get a plan, come up to work on that.
More fun for you.
Yeah, been thinking about that a lot, trying to determine what, if, if I narrow down to one or two at the most, where that would be, it's not gonna be at the fire station, they don't want us there, and I understand that.
None of them probably do, I mean, that's the thing, you have to go to like, the community center or something.
Yeah.
What's the drawback of going all absentee?
I don't, I think we have to have something.
We have to have a station, so.
Probably, at least one, I would assume.
That's the governor or something.
Most people, you'll probably see more absentees than you ever have, but I, I'm sure there's still that, yeah, you still have that one.
It's all changing daily, so I'll keep you posted.
Okay, good. Any else? No, no, Mark?
The only thing I did was, uh, the sheriff gave me a call there on Friday night, talked about what was going on down in Feral, and then, uh, said I could come down on Saturday there, I was down for the briefing in the morning, and I spent most of the day there with the sheriff and the different people, and again, sheriff's already said that, but, uh, the comments from, we had a lot of people from throughout the state, actually, there on this mission, and. And the comments were how great it was to have something like that, the trailer, the EMA trailer, um, and we do need a few tweaks in there, and the sheriff's already on that, and Joel's on that, I think, so, um, that's gonna be a good asset for the county, and, uh, real happy we got that, and proud of the guys, uh, sheriff and all the guys, and all the people who were volunteering, all the volunteer fire people that were there, rescue people, um. They put in a lot of hard days down there, and, uh, they don't always get the thanks they deserve, so, um, it's, it's a sad situation, it'll all come out in the end, but, uh, I wanna say thanks to everybody that was there.
Okay. Um, I did not have anything last week, all of our meetings have kinda been pushed off, so I have been in discussion with, um, people's service a little bit, and I will communicate with them again on, uh, uh, our future together. Um, other than that, it's been pretty quiet, so. Uh, it's like, uh, there's maybe gonna be a fire chief meeting tonight, it's scheduled on Zoom.
It just gets, okay, I thought I saw the Zoom.
Yep, it was scheduled on Zoom, so, um, I know I got an invitation, I'm sure you guys probably saw it come through, it would've been last week, I think Joel sent us one, but if not, I, I think they're still gonna have it, if they don't, maybe they'll let us know, but if anybody wants to sit in on that tonight, but.
We'll try, that's okay.
If it happens, so.
The ISAC Executive Board Retreat, we're gonna pull a pin on Wednesday, the, or the fifteenth, or the, the A and A, or it might reset a date. But we're gonna give it till the fifteenth, and make the decision.
Sounds good.
Probably just as well.
Yep. Uh, any other thing for, for the other board? No, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, motion of second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.